Good evening and welcome to the September 17th meeting of the Hickory City Council. Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Whit Malone, Senior Pastor at First Presbyterian Church.
Would you pray with me? Gracious God, for this day and for its blessings, we give you thanks. For work and for play, for food and for shelter, for family and for friends, we give you thanks. And for the many unseen or unrecognized ways that you've cared for us, we are grateful. We also thank you for this city, our home. We thank you for those who serve you by serving us, keep them safe as they carry out their duties. And now, God, I ask you to bless those gathered here tonight who hold office in the government of our city, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, a spirit of kindness, and a spirit of justice. Help them to use the authority you have given them to serve faithfully. We pray this in your holy name, amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, I'm Hank Guest, Mayor of Pro Tem. Mayor Wright is running a few minutes late. As soon as he gets here, I'll relinquish this seat to him and he can take over. But until he gets here, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Councilman Brad Lael is not present tonight. He's out of town on business and he will not be here with us this evening. I'd like to recognize and have him to stand. We have three students from the St. Stevens Honors Civics and Economics class with us here tonight. We have Jordan Hefner, Nolan Foster, and Dakota Griffin. Y'all would stand, please. I talked to these young gentlemen here a few minutes ago and they said they hadn't had evidence that they were here, so they were taking pictures. I hope that works out alright for you. And we're gonna be watching to make sure you don't cut out early, too. Thank you, thank you for being here. Alright, let's go ahead and get started with the fourth item on the agenda of these special presentations. The Business Well Crafted Award to the First Security Company presented by Dave Gissi from the Business Development Committee. Dave, and the mayor's here, sir. Before you get started, we'll let the mayor take his seat.
Now, go ahead, Dave.
Oh, no, we'll wait. He likes big entrances.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crowe. This evening, what we would like to do is present the Business Well Crafted Award. At this time, if it's alright, I'd like to turn my back on you so I can talk to the crowd to recognize our deserving company. The Business Development Committee was created by city council. The purpose of the committee is to support the growth and continuation of existing businesses as well as new business ventures here in the Hickory community. As an extension of that, they have developed the Business Well Crafted Award, which began here in 2013. And each month, we have made a presentation to a very deserving company that has been in business in this area for 75 years or longer. I would encourage you to go to, which is another extension of promoting the community that the city has done, which is the hickorywellcraft.com website. You can see the article about all of these companies that we have around here. That website also promotes a lot of other activities under the categories of live, work, and learn that we have here in the community. We encourage you to go there. Tonight, our recipient for the award is First Security Company, who are also known as First Security Insurance. We have Mr. Joe Abbot here to receive the award this evening. If you'd be kind enough to join me for a minute. Let me tell you a little bit about First Security and then Mr. Abbot will share some thoughts also. The information we have is that they began in 1990. So, as we said, we're recognizing companies of 75 or more, they're fast approaching the century. First Security is an independent insurance agency located here, representing some of the best insurance carriers in the nation. And quite honestly, you've been in existence longer than a number of the companies you represent. So, that is a testament to the longevity of this company. And the reason that they've been so successful has to be through the service that they provide, the families and businesses that they support with their insurance products. I got some information about tenure of the people that you have working. I'll let you share that with the people here in a minute. But it's absolutely amazing when you hear the number of years that most of the people have been there at First Security. It's a testament to the fact that it's a great place to work and that they do an outstanding job with what it is. And we owe them a bit of a twofold thank you. Number one, for being in business, for almost a century, but in addition, providing the service that they do. Because there's nothing that can ruin the opportunity for even a successful business to remain active and then suffer the catastrophic loss of not having properly taken care of. So, I'm sure over the years, numerous claims that you all have helped us settle, have saved many families and businesses in our community from serious financial strain. So, at this time, what we would like to do is present to you the Business Well Crafted Award, presented by First Security Company Incorporated. Says it is presented by the Hickory Business Development Committee. Backing companies for more than 75 years of doing business in the community. Congratulations.
I really don't have a speech. I made a note or two when I first walked in. And a lot of you folks know me. I've spent many years sitting back where these folks here are, serving 16-plus years on the Hickory school board. I was torn between the devil and the deep blue sea coming out here tonight because tonight's my 33rd anniversary. I promised I didn't have to make a big speech and I won't do it. Going back to reflect what Dave just said, you know, we are a service industry. We mirror what the city of Hickory does. You are a service industry. You are there to take care of the citizens, the taxpayers, and to make sure that what you do, you do well. The city of Hickory and First Security have been blessed throughout the years. We have been blessed with good leaders. Throughout the years, we've had good leaders at First Security. The city of Hickory's had good leaders, and I applaud you for that. I thank you for being here and what you do. Because I'm gonna tell you, as an elected official, every day out there is an adventure. But I thank you for that. As far as longevity of our employees, most of our employees have been there 25-plus years. We have a number that have been over 30 years. When he stood up here and said, "First Security's been here almost a century," I said, "Man, I feel like it. I feel like I'm gonna die." Because every day is just crazy out there. Because you never know what's around the corner. But I will say this, living and working in Hickory, it is a partnership. It is a partnership with the citizens of Hickory. It is a partnership with you folks. It is a partnership with the people that come into our office every day. Not just our customers, but our employees. We walk down the same sidewalks, we drink out of the same water fountains, we're all on the same page. We are the fabric of this community. And I thank you for being here. I sincerely do. On behalf of the employees of First Security, I thank you for the recognition. The people that work there deserve all that. And once more, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Joe Abbot, and thank Susan Osmond for the great job she does for Donna and me. And thank Marty for perseverance.
Well, I'll have to pay that price when I get home.
Maybe we could give you a proclamation to take with you.
Okay, we have requesting to be heard, Mr. Cliff Moon, wants to speak on Constitution Day.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crowe. When I arrived here this evening, I was unaware, and Debbie kindly showed me, that you had indeed, Mr. Mayor, made a proclamation regarding this day. And I'm glad of that. For on this date in 1787, as all of us know, our nation was moved in a faithful and most fortunate new direction, away from a loosely confederated union of virtually independent states to a stronger, more unified federal constitutional republic. And that republic has endured longer than any other such republic, as you well know, and has prospered to become the greatest nation on earth. We are blessed to be its citizens. I stand before you, my city council, tonight because I did not know, first of all, that you had done that proclamation. We often see them here and I noticed that it wasn't on the agenda. So, again, I thank you and I was coming to apologize for not requesting it because, as you know, and I will do later in the fall, I generally come before you, unless another group does it, and request a proclamation in regard to Bill of Rights Day, which you all have graciously made year after year for at least the last three or four years. So, I consider this date to be the most significant day after July the 4th to which all of us who enjoy the blessings of the Constitution and liberty are heirs. And as a teacher at the community college, I asked my students today, and though they weren't in a civics class or a history class, they were in a world religion class, but I asked them what the day was, and most of them didn't know. And I think a lot of citizens don't know what's going on. And I have to say that we had a very good event that the League of Women Voters put on down in Newton today as well. But with your permission, I would like to read the words of the preamble into the official record of this meeting tonight so that we all may be reminded of the six specific purposes which the framers of our constitution stated as their reasons for proposing it. With your permission. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America. It is my belief that whatever issues, political, cultural, or otherwise, may from time to time divide us, and there are certainly many, these six purposes for the establishment of our republic should always remind us of what unites us as Americans and citizens of Hickory." Thank you for that time. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd? A motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Lael is absent for a business meeting. Motion to reaffirm or ratify on second reading?
So, move second.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, second by Mrs. Fox. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion's carried. Anything to be moved from the consent agenda?
It will be approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is unanimous. Departmental reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First department report, I'll ask Ms. Carol Dennis, the children's librarian at Ridgeview, and Ms. Lisa Neal, the children's librarian at Patrick Bieber, coming to podium and present a report or highlights of the children's reading program this summer. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Mayor Wright, members of the council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crowe, thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you some of the fun that we have at the libraries in the summer. And we'll start with it. The mission statement of the public library is to encourage exploration of new ideas, support local education, enhance the economic vitality of the region, strengthen a sense of community, and enrich the quality of life for all. Now, I didn't hit the button. Underneath, oh, thank you. Underneath that broad mission is the goal of youth services and the summer reading program, which is to inspire lifelong learning in our young and a lifelong love of reading. The focus at the public library is on fun and cultural enrichment because there's so many competing interests for children these days. And to fight the summer slump. Any of you who were educators or parents know about the summer slump. Children that do not read over the summer can lose over two months of reading achievement by the time they go back to school in the fall. And that time, that achievement level is not made up when they go back in the fall. They don't just catch up in September when they jump back into school. It's cumulative. And so, if a child loses reading achievement each summer, by the time they finish the sixth grade, they can be as much as two full academic years behind the other students in their class, simply because they didn't read in the summer. And studies have shown that it takes as little as 20 minutes a day to make a total turnaround and a complete difference in the reading scores of the kids when they go back to school in the fall.
Research shows that the children most affected by this achievement gap are children living in poverty and children of color. Summer school is an option that many people think of, but summer school's focus is on remedial instruction and passing those tests. And what we do is to focus on reading as pleasure, as an entertainment choice that we want people to make, and helping them discover a lifelong love of reading and learning. So, our focus is on fun. So, I add to that, as you are not aware, computer literacy skills are an important part of overall literacy. You can't apply for a job anymore if you don't know how to use a computer. So, starting children early off with access to computers, with games that teach them how to use a mouse, how to save documents, such that and so that's a big part of what we do at the libraries.
It's a very important service to those families that don't have computers in the home. And there's a lot more than you realize. So, we run these huge funds incentive programs for kids from 0 to 17 every summer. This past summer, we had 1,300 kids sign up for summer reading. Over the 10 weeks of the program, we had 130 individual programs offered to children and their parents and families and siblings, to which over 3,000 people attended. So, we were busy. And the incentives for time spent reading or being read to, because being read to is just as important as reading, the kids could earn free prizes, the incentives. They could earn toys or books. And I'm very proud to say that a great many of them selected books over the toys. Our friends at the library provided us with the books from Scholastic so that we could actually give to the children who participated in the reading program up to five free books for them to keep.
And that access to books is an important part of maintaining their reading skills over the summer. If you don't have books, you can't read. Alright, 10 busy weeks of programming.
It was a long summer.
It was a very long break from school for the students. And we tried to have programs on a variety of days and at a variety of times. So, whatever you put in for a working parent or work through a shift, we worked really hard to have morning, afternoon, evening programs and mixing it up on the days of the week. So, 130 separate programs.
And different kinds of programs. We had storytellers, of course, because that's what we love at the library. Cultural programs, the Healing Force came and they do African stories and music and dancing. They got everybody up and playing drums.
Inspirational speakers. The balloon lady doesn't look like much, but she's got an incredibly empowering message to kids and I absolutely love her.
Every Friday, we showed movies, family movies, Friday afternoons. And magicians are always a big draw at the library. Now, magician is almost a misnomer. There's a whole genre of performers who simply spend their summers going from library to library to library. They get hold of the theme that the libraries are using and they create a program so that the magician is also a motivational speaker. He talks about learning and creativity and imagination. And they all incorporate books and learning and libraries into their shows for their target audience. And we had different age ranges, so we tried to offer programs for teens and older kids. We had a mind reader who was amazing. You should try him sometime.
We collaborated with local organizations such as the Catawba Science Center. They came over to Patrick Bieber and did a fabulous science program without her and what lives in New York and why it's important. Ah, and snakes in the library.
Yes.
You cannot have a summer in the public library without snakes. Thank you. More multicultural performances, music, storytelling, and crafts. We had an awesome time with the Hickory Museum of Art and just doing weekly arts and crafts opportunities for children.
And they were very popular. We had a surprisingly large attendance at the weekly craft programs.
Yes.
We had to scurry around very quickly and get extra stuff.
Storytimes. We tried to offer storytimes for all ages and every unique day that we possibly can. We also have the Pause to Read program. So, that is a great thing there in the bottom. That is Nova. She is one of our certified therapy dogs and she comes with her owner to the library. So, every Thursday at Patrick Bieber and at Ridgeview, you can make an appointment to read to a certified therapy dog. So, if you're a struggling reader, the dog is not correct your pronunciation, the dog is not roll his eyes, he gets bored. The dog helps relax children and is just the most patient and loving reader. And we are now booked through the end of September. It's tremendously popular.
And these storytimes continue throughout the year. These are not just summer.
They're always there. Okay. Every child ready to read is an incentive from the American Library Association. And it's just educating all of us that reading is an essential life skill. This is not an option. You all need to read to be successful. And these pre-literacy skills in order to be a successful reader start at birth, not at kindergarten. So, it's very important to get parents and childcare givers involved with this. And it's not hard. They previously had this with all kinds of PhD kind of words that you had to check the pronunciation on. They boiled it down to talk to your baby, sing with your baby, play, read, and write. So, we can all do that. So, part of our job is making that information accessible to parents and caregivers.
And every 4th of July, actually 3rd of July, because we're closed on the 4th of July, tradition at Patrick Bieber is the Happy Birthday America Parade. It's a wonderful family event. The kids decorate their bikes and trikes and wheels and whatever they have. And we have a patriotic sing-along and then everyone goes outside and we parade around the salt block. And we have prizes. And it's a wonderful, wonderful Hickory tradition that I was very glad to find when I moved here. Our programming covers not just books and reading. We incorporate all kinds of things. Mad Science comes and does science programs. Anything to get the children excited about learning. And they will come out of a Mad Science program and run into the library looking for books on physics and...
Right, engineering.
Yeah.
More storytelling.
More storyteller.
We also work with the Catawba County Soil and Water Conservation. And they did a great program that talks, again, about the importance of soil, why it matters. And then we did arts and crafts, painting with soil, and lots of hands-on stuff. That was terrific.
Because remember, this summer, our theme was dig into reading. So, we try and bring in some authors and theater. More theater, different kinds of theater. This is another one of the performers that makes the rounds in the summer. He does magic tricks and inspirational things and brings in books and engineering and...
Almost anything you can think of. His managers do be funny and informative for games.
A new one this year was the game truck. This is a long, big truck that comes and it parks at the library. And the kids had to do extra activities, extra work in order to be able to earn their ticket onto the game truck. It was only there for one night and we had a partner. It's a video game park. And one side of the truck is benches to sit on and the other one is screens. And there are party managers inside and they could spend an hour trying out all different kinds of video games.
We are not saying that video games are bad. Video games are an entertainment choice and reading is an entertainment choice. So, we try to give them opportunities to read and write and draw a comic in order to earn some time playing the video games. And that was surprisingly popular.
Yeah. Music, puppets.
Lots of entertainment.
And then, at the end of the summer, we have our last blast. It's a big celebration of all the reading achievement. The kids are invited. We bring in Big Bang Boom, children's rock group, and Ice Cream Party. And we also have brand prizes that the kids have earned, raffle tickets by the time they spent reading. So, the more they read, the more their chances are at winning the bigger prizes. And we do the drawings then.
And we ask them to read for 25 hours, this is broken down into 30 minutes a day.
And quite a few complained that that was not enough.
Yes. And at Ridgeview, there is a tradition of having a family picnic. So, we had a family picnic and the Ridgeview friends of the library cooked out. It was the, I was assured all week long to rain, girl, it never rained till we reached the picnic. So, I did it. And a friend very cheerfully cooked hot dogs in the rain. We had a wonderful turnout and great time. And Little Malachi was one of our prize winners and it just had to include that smile.
And some more winning smiles.
And more winning smiles. That's a Lego set because the Lego ties into the STEM education. Gets certificate at Barnes &amp; Noble and an arts and crafts supply set.
And part of the reading program that we had for teens was if they completed their 24, 25 hours of reading, then they could enter a drawing to be one of the library's reading stars. I don't know if you've ever seen any of the ALAs read posters, but they have movie stars and authors and all kinds of famous athletes that do posters holding their favorite book. And so, we're gonna do the Hickory Public Library Reading Stars.
And the magic is...
These were the, yeah. These were the winning teens that we drew and we're gonna make posters.
Right, these are not the finished posters.
Yes, just the picture in front of the green screen. I haven't had time to do the Photoshop yet.
And everybody seemed to have a really good time. So, these were some of our patron quotes. We solicited feedback through a survey. And I think the survey responses were overwhelmingly positive. I think one of my favorites and one of the police's favorite responses was when we told children that they could choose a free book as a surprise, as a prize. And they would say, "You mean I can keep this? For real?" It was like, "Yes, write your name and you don't have to bring it back. That book is yours." And just watching them smile and just, you wouldn't think that a paperback book would be that exciting, but it was really gratifying to see that.
So, that was our summer. It was fun, it was busy.
We had a wonderful time with glass in a room. So, thank you so much for your support of the library and everything. Do you have any questions?
So, that's how you spent your summer vacation?
Yes. Summer what? What? Summer what?
That movie to Hickory, yes.
Do you have any programs for us older kids?
You know, older kids are always invited to join us at storytime. I always make a tradition at Ridgeview, giving them a puppy, which, and it really knows what it's all about. knows what it's all about. If you know your left from your right, it helps with letter recognition later, and you don't get confused with Gs and Ds and Ps and Qs and Gs. So we work really hard on that, and you have not lived until you come and done the hokey with the kids from Community Ridge State Care, because they are really, really good. Come on down Mondays at 10:30 for the hokey pokey.
Mondays, what time? I need to make it for the hokey pokey.
Now, on Wednesday mornings at 11:00, we do the tutti-tot over at Hickory Public Library.
You know, I'd just like to comment that any program is successful when it has successful, energetic leaders at the top. You all are fantastic.
Oh, thank you.
I just, it brings back memories of going to the library and reading, except we didn't get a book or a toy. We've got a little star beside our leftovers. But your level of enthusiasm is contagious.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we do have the best job in the world.
I love it. It's like somebody said, if you find a job you love, you never work a day in your life.
Yeah.
So you've been on summer vacation the whole time.
I don't think I've had a summer vacation in 27.
Just for curiosity, because I think, I'm certain that this is a bargain. Do y'all have any idea what our marginal additional budget is on this morning?
Yeah, it's just part of the children's library program budget.
Our programming budget for the
I don't mean that it
The town mayor is always going to ask, how much does this cost?
Well, I'm wondering if we shouldn't give them some more money and see if we can get some more kids.
That would be awesome. Then we could do even more.
Yes.
Well, if we want to influence the kids' opportunities for success, the number one thing we can do is get them to be good readers.
Yes, that's true. And it takes very little to do that, actually.
They just have to want to read.
They have to want to read, and I think when I started out, one of the things that surprised me was the number of reluctant readers who weren't reluctant about reading, they were reluctant about reading fiction. And there were a number of boys that I turned on to the gruesome story of Phineas Gage. He was a 19th century U. R. worker who had a tamping iron blast through his head, and it left this really gruesome hole, and they have a picture of his skull on the book, and I couldn't resist that. So it turns out that a lot of those boys who are reluctant to read, are reluctant to read books about talking animals, and they want to read true stories and how things work and a lot of nonfiction. So a lot of what we do is finding the right book for each reader and matching every reader to a book.
And I think I saw in your paper today about the e-reader that you're going to be teaching have to download books that, that's another thing that's available that I never thought I'd be happy with the Kindle, and I am, but I still like that paperback. I can't help it.
I know, I know.
The smell of books, I do like the feel of a book in my hand, but you can also read on your smartphone.
Yes.
And you can borrow library books for free on your phone or your e-reader. And there's no overdue, due fines on our ebooks, so.
I did not know that.
I don't have an e-reader.
But it's just another great service that you offer. It's fabulous.
We can be here for days talking about how awesome the library is. Do you have a library card? September is library card month, and you should sign up. Your tax dollars are already supporting us. Go ahead and get a card and come on out and have a good time.
I always tell the kids, the schools do a lot of tours through the public library, and so I always talk to them about, you know, where does, where do you think the money comes? This book costs $25, and there are 80,000 of them in this room. Who do you think pays for all those books? And so we talk a little bit about taxes and money, where the money comes from. And so I tell them, the library isn't free. Your parents have already paid for it, so you may as well use it.
Your enthusiasm is infectious. We congratulate you.
Thank you for letting us.
Library budget's going to go easier next year to win.
How many of us want to do the hokey pokey? I might show up too.
I'll go what? I spent five years in college doing the hokey pokey. That was wonderful. Oh, my goodness. And, you know, most cities in North Carolina do not have libraries.
That's true.
And most all of them don't have two. So we are blessed, and we certainly, and Mr. Berry, I don't know who's responsible for all of these Louise's and these other hires in the library, but somebody did a good job. Louise, did you do the good job?
And I hired Louise.
And we hired Mitt. We hired Mitt.
We hired Louise.
Funny how that works. Okay. What a great report. And that, I'm starting off the rest of the week really feeling good. Mr. Berry, the next.
The next department report, I'll ask the city's deputy city attorney, Ms. Arnita Dula, to come to the podium, and Ms. Dula is going to discuss with council the recent notification their city received dismissing the HUD housing discrimination complaint.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, council members, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. That's a hard act to follow. I don't have the hokey pokey or a storyteller, and I'm not going to do magic, and I don't have a snake.
Make it quick, then.
I almost had a first traumatic stress experience when I saw that, when I was teaching. One of my first teaching experiences was the snake showcase. And guess who got volunteered to go open the trunk and lift out, help lift out the 250-pound python? Me. So. I stand before you today just to give you a brief presentation on the fair housing complaints. We have received a response from HUD, and I would like to share that information with you. First, I'm going to give just a little bit of background. On January 31st of this year, nine complainants filed complaints with HUD, U.S. Department of Urban Housing, or Housing and Urban Development. The complaints were actually filed by an attorney from the Southern Coalition for Justice, Social Justice, on the complainant's behalf. The respondents included the City of Hickory, the Citizens Advisory Committee, the Parks and Recreation Department Committee. And then, the allegations, there were a number of allegations made in the complaints. This is the primary allegation, sort of the umbrella, that the city engaged in discriminatory practices against the complainants on the basis of their race, when the city closed and then ultimately demolished the Ridgeview and West Hickory pools, despite opposition from the African-American community. The complainants also alleged that the discrimination was ongoing because the city had failed to build a new pool. More specifically, the federal acts that were outlined in the complaint included the federal fair housing law, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Section 109 of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, and Executive Order 12892. Again, the complainants alleged that the respondents were violating the following federal acts, again, by engaging in racially discriminatory acts against the complainants. Specifically, they alleged that the city failed to affirmatively further fair housing, which is a requirement as a recipient of community development block grant funding, that the residents of West Hickory and Ridgeview communities were subject to different terms, conditions, privileges, services, and facilities than other citizens, other residents. The complaints were denied municipal services, that they did not, the respondents did not follow the Parks and Recreation Department's master plan recommendations to build a centrally located pool. The respondents, the city was not responsive to the complainant's request to build a pool in a location accessible to the Ridgeview and West Hickory communities. The city didn't permit the complainants to voice their complaints or their concerns at the May 12, 2012 council meeting. So those included, those were the primary allegations made in the complaints. The city filed this response during the week of March 11th, 2013, and the response included the following defenses. There was an argument that there was a statute of limitations issue, that the complaints were not timely filed, and that's based on the regulations from HUD. Complaints have to be filed within a specific period of time. Number two, that there was a lack of nexus or connection between the closure and demolition of pools, of the pools in the Fair Housing Act. Number three, that the community development block grant funds have been and were being used appropriately, and in accordance with HUD guidelines, the funds could not be used to construct or maintain pools. Number four, the city had not treated the complainants differently, that all city owner-operated pools were closed, beginning with the St. Stevens Pool in 2006, that the city also provided the free swimming program in partnership with Hickory Foundation YMCA. Number five, that recreational facilities and services are equitably distributed throughout the city, including five facilities in Ward 4 and 3 in the West Hickory community, and that the closure and demolition of the pools, it was based on several factors. You see here the cost benefits analysis that included the revenues versus the attendance versus the operational costs, the recession, if we all recall, the recession hit around about 2007, 2008, the impact on the budget, that the master plans, recreational plans were amended and had been amended, there were changing trends in aquatic recreation, and ultimately, once the pools were closed, there were significant safety and liability issues over the closed pools. Seventh argument, that citizens have no constitutional rights to a pool. And the last three, that the state of North Carolina does not mandate the municipalities provide recreational services, that the May 12 meeting involved issues of free speech, over which HUD has no jurisdiction, and then number 10, council has discretion over project selection. So that was a part of the response to the complaints. And again, that was submitted during the week of March 11th. As a part of the process, HUD offers conciliation to the parties, and that is HUD's way of saying mediation. The complainants offered to settle the case if the city would build a $1.75 to $2 million citywide pool with the features listed there. Also, if the city would provide free competitive swimming, swimming lessons, water safety instruction, and water sports at the facility. HUD presented the settlement offer to the city, again, as part of the required conciliation process. At your April 2nd, 2013 council meeting, council, you voted publicly to decline the settlement offer, and at that point in time, HUD ended the conciliation process and continued with the investigation. Couple of other
What do you mean, on that previous
What do I mean?
What do you mean as a required conciliation process?
Part of HUD's process, part of the investigation process, is to offer the parties the opportunity to enter into conciliation or mediation. They're required to offer that to the parties.
Even though they had no jurisdiction over that?
Well, I'm getting to that point. Again, the settlement offer was declined, and the conciliation process ended. A couple of other developments occurred. If you recall, the investigation was supposed to be concluded within 100 days from the date of filing of the complaints. However, on June 18th of this year, we received written notice from HUD that they had not completed the investigation, they were extending that time, and that the projected completion date was June 30th of this year, but that date was subject to change, which it did. Then, on July 3rd, 2013, the complaints were amended to remove the Citizens Advisory Committee as a respondent. One of the things I hadn't listed here was, I'd argue that the proper party was the city and not the Citizens Advisory Committee or even the Parks and Recreation Commission, as they are created organizations, volunteer organizations created by council. So the Citizens Advisory Committee was removed as a respondent, as they really had no dealings with the closure of the pools. On August 26th, we received HUD's response, and the letter was dated August 19th, 2013. The response included a letter of closure and a determination of no reasonable cause slash letter of determination of compliance. And that latter document is a summary of the factual evidence supporting HUD's dismissal of the case. HUD primarily looked at two issues in the case. The first issue was whether the city refused to provide municipal services to the complainants because of their race, being African, African-American. And the second issue was whether the respondents, the city violated Title VI of the Civil Rights Act in Section 109 of the Housing and Community Development Act by demolishing the pools because of the complainant's race. So two primary issues that HUD reviewed or looked at during their investigation. Ultimately, here's the conclusion that HUD reached on the issues addressed in the response. One, no reasonable cause exists to believe that the city violated Section 804B of the Fair Housing Act as alleged. The Fair Housing Act, of course, prohibits discrimination based on race, nationality, religion, sexual orientation, and other protected classes in housing. So HUD's determination here, there was, is no reasonable cause to believe that the city has violated this act. Two, no reasonable cause exists to believe that discriminatory, discriminatory housing practice has occurred, and the complaints have been dismissed under the Fair Housing Act. They also took an additional step of applying Title VI of the Civil Rights Act and Section 109, because the complaints had alleged that the city was also violating these particular federal acts. HUD stated that in applying Title VI and Section 109, the application of both acts had no impact on the outcome of the case and no impact in the evidentiary standards for proving discrimination. There are certain elements that have to be met. The complainants were not able to meet all of the elements that would prove or demonstrate discrimination had occurred based on race. Number two, there is no reasonable cause to believe that complaints were excluded from participating in the benefits or denied the benefits of, or were subject to discrimination in violation of Title VI and Section 109. And finally, HUD declared in the response, or stated that the city is in compliance with the requirements of Title VI and Section 109. I know that's been a quick presentation, but I wanted to give you the highlights of the response, and at this time, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dula.
I'd like to publicly thank Ms. Dula for the work she's done on this. The city took this complaint very seriously. Ms. Dula did yeoman's work preparing the response. At one point, she asked me into the city's library, because she was going to review the response with me, and literally, the entire table was covered with documentation that she put together over the course of the weeks, and the response was extremely thorough, extremely professional, and I think the results of the HUD letter demonstrate the great work that she did in presenting it, because we took it very seriously.
Many of the people here may not remember the circumstances of this, but eight or 10 years ago, we had three pools, three city-sponsored pools. One in the St. Stevens area, one in Ridgeview, and one was the George Ivy over in West Hickory, right? You saw reference to a shift in recreational activities, and in a nutshell, what that means is we were down to 20 kids a day using Ridgeview and 20 kids a day using George Ivy. The cost to upgrade each pool and meet the standards required would be $400,000 apiece, $20,000 per user. And these users were not, we were not talking about 365 days. We were talking about 80 days usage a year. That's the period school's around. That's the period's goes around. So in addition to the $20,000 per user of capital investment, we were looking at $1,000 per user for each year to operate. It's simply, the cost benefit just did not work. On the other hand, the library, 1,300 participants is what I saw, right? And I'm certain we did not spend $800,000. So that's the kind of judgments and decisions we have to reach daily as we run, as we try to run the city, or as the staff runs the city, and we help set policy. It's unfortunate that those 20 kids who were using the pools do not have use of the pools, but they do have use of the Y. And every child in Hickory is able to get free swimming lessons and learn how to swim at the YMCA, courtesy of the Y and the City of Hickory. This year, I think it's about 160. Does anybody know the number of kids who participated in the free swimming lessons?
I think it's 122.
Well, I remember it's 100...
It's 122 this last session.
Was it the last session? But we had several sessions, right?
It's several sessions, yeah.
I remember at one time, there was 137, and there were more sessions to come. So compare that against the 40, on average, who were using these pools. Not an answer that satisfies and pleases everyone, but it's the same kind of decision we have to make in our own lives when we decide if we're going to take, if we can afford to take, a six-week vacation or a one-week vacation, or the other cost benefit judgments we have to make. Any matters not on the agenda? General comments?
I have a comment about a presentation I'd like to... You were out Friday, and I sub for you at the Hickory Community Theater. Here is a key that they presented to the city for our backing their major renovation, and it's done by Ricky Adams did the design. And each one has a key for each council member and a jewel, what a jewel our community theater is to this area. So I'd like to...
Can we put that in the...
What does my key open?
Can we put that in the case, Mr. Berry? I was unable to be there because of the, so you understand, because of the mayoral candidate debate. And although I felt this was very important, and I wanted to be here very much, I felt that the debate was more important. Thank you for filling in, and I heard you get it admirably.
The play, if you get a chance to see it, Spamelot, was wonderful. It showcases what talent we have in this area. Hilarious play. And it just goes to show what partnership does. They raised $1.2 million, and we certainly have done our part in helping them do that. But it is a collaboration that I think we are all looking for to get bigger bang for our buck. And looking at the renovations, we did get that. It was wonderful.
It's an inspiring space, and it was a partnership. It's great.
It was.
A lot of good pictures on Facebook that side.
Oh, God.
I don't know what you were doing, it looked like you were cheering or something.
I was, I was. It was wonderful.
We had a great report on things the kids could do this summer, and Mrs. Fox was telling me, again, I was at the debate, so I didn't see all of this action. But Mrs. Fox, would you mind sharing some of the things that were going on in Hickory Friday night?
Well, you know, we have a long conversation about losing our youth and young people living here, but we lose sight of the fact that we do have great youth that have stayed in Hickory. And I happen to have a 36-year-old and a 41-year-old. And I had attended the forum, and then a friend and I had been downtown. The taproom was full of college students. The play was going on. The wine shop had music. Previous to that, there was, my 36-year-old and his wife and child had been to the music under the sales at 6:30. The 41-year-old had then gone to the Arts Center with Brian for another musical venue, and then went to the crossing. And his comment was, that was a set of young people that had just graduated from college that were all at the crossing for that venue. And he said to me, Mom, Hickory was a hopping place last night. And so I find that exciting because I think sometimes we get a little depressed about the fact that we are losing young people. But there are lots of young people in this town still that are young adults that are making a difference and that enjoy the things that are being offered here. You know, one of the beauties of the swim program, that's another great partnership initiative. We have partnerships going on all over this town that sometimes we forget about, and they're working.
Well, what I find in Hickory is people, like the theater came to us and said, we're going to raise 1.X million dollars. City, can you help us? Because this is the city-owned building. And we helped in a modest amount. Holler Hosery, that's another inspiring space, a building that was in severe disrepair. And there's now a little over $7 million invested in it. Around $300,000 of city money, I understand, has gone into the area around it and some ramps and sidewalks, and $3.5 million of private investment, and $3.5 million of federal tax credits. Folks, we can get there and we can make inspiring spaces a truly big deal, that we've all got to put our shoulders to the wheel and work together. Very good meeting.
I have a quick story to share. I had the opportunity, a week or so ago, to speak to the neighborhood college here in this room for their first class. And part of that is, everyone goes around and introduces themselves. And there were two young ladies that introduced themselves that had just moved to Hickory from Los Angeles. That night, about an hour or so before that meeting, they had literally flew into Charlotte and had just arrived in Hickory, they told the story of how they were in Los Angeles and through the internet and through the city's webpage that they Googled and found Hickory. And they decided that Hickory was the place they wanted to be. They were sisters. One of them is going to be attending Appalachian State University in Boone. They decided they didn't like the cold weather in Boone, but they wanted to find a place near Boone to live. These ladies, I probably shouldn't say this, I think they were probably in their mid-20s, but they picked Hickory off of the internet through the work that Dana and Mandy had done preparing, helping to prepare various things that are available about Hickory. They Googled Hickory and found all these things. And they didn't, they couldn't say enough about how excited they were to be here, and they decided to come here and live in Hickory. And I thought that that was a really neat story.
Mr. Guest, just to piggyback on that, we have a number of our neighborhood college participants with us this evening, and they were with myself and Warren and Andrea last night to 7:30. I teased them, I said, any other gluttons for punishment? If y'all would stand up, we'd love to give you a round of applause. It's so awesome.
I don't know how many people ever moved to a city all the way from the other side of the country and then on their very first night, within the first couple of hours that they spent, not only did they find Hickory, but they registered for neighborhood college before they ever saw Hickory or before they ever came to Hickory. And they were here within hours after arriving to Hickory at the neighborhood college to learn more about the city that they had decided to live in. So I just thought that was just a really neat, neat, true story to share.
Well, you know, I believe that perhaps the number one priority of inspiring spaces is going to create situations like that. People outside of Hickory know how great we are. They see, they see the climate, they see a lot of great things about Hickory, they see the geographic location. We have a tendency in Hickory, like most cities, we've got to take for granted the good things, and we dwell a little too much on the downsides. And I think if we can get this inspiring spaces ball rolling, that people, reasonable people will be uplifted and will be focusing on the bright side. Anything else? Motion to go into closed session?
No.
Motion of Mr. Patton, signed by Mr. Seaver, all the papers say I. All of those, huh? Thank you all for being here.